The Sutter County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board during a board consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak about any item appearing on the agenda, please fill a yellow speaker card on a table in the back. If you speak about more than one agenda item, I wish you to fill out more than a speaker card and present them to the board clerk. Please fill out a separate comment card for each agenda item. If you wish to speak under public comment, please note that on the speaker card when the matter is announced. Please approach the speaker's lectern in the back after being recognized by the chair. We have roll call, please.
Supervisor Dean Meyer? Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Present. Okay. Valerie Hogenberg, I butchered your name, I think. Would you please do the invocation?
Our holy Father, we bow our heads before thee this day in gratitude for these favorable circumstances that we're able to unite here together to discuss important matters that have far-reaching consequences for individuals. We pray for thy Spirit to rest upon us, for thy mercy to be with us, for thy grace, to help each individual who will speak today or share an opinion, that they will do so in accordance with the gospel of love and kindness and peace and gratitude. We recognize today on this meeting those who have served this community in valiant ways. We are grateful unto thee for each one of them and pray that they will continue their courageous service in this great county. We will recognize this day others and pray for thy Spirit to attend and assist them in their responsibilities. We pray a special blessing to be with the Board of Supervisors, that they will be wise and just and merciful and caring, that they will seek thy guidance in all their decisions because they do have far-reaching consequences. We're thankful unto thee for their time and their service and pray that thou will bless them with strength and ability beyond their own. And we pray also for their families. We pray for each one of the row officers, for all of the support staff, and for the volunteers who make this great county move forward. We unite ourselves together in prayer on behalf of every citizen of this county. May they have peace in their minds and love in their hearts. In the name of thy beloved Son, our Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay. Next, we will have John Schalwitz lead us in the flag salute. John is leaving us as our fire chief. This is his last board meeting. Thank you, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before we get started with presentations, I would like to re... Some of you may know Bill Vanasack. He is our new county council. Deborah McKelley has resigned, taken another job. Actually, they switched jobs. So, anyway, kind of funny. Bill was in our county office for many, many years, and he'll talk later, but I'd like to welcome Bill back. And next, we have our undersheriff, Sheriff Smallwood. He would like to do a presentation first, and then we'll go on to the regular presentations.
Is that better? Let me start. Probably don't even need this, really. The scholarship is presented by the California State Sheriff's Association, and before I go any further, I want to recognize that we have two California State Association representatives here. Executive Director Carmen Green and her sidekick, planning and training Alexandria McDonald. So, thank you for coming and helping us out there. The award is... So, I was lucky enough to be presented with undersheriff of the year award last year because of my amazing sheriff that has said some kind words. Some of them were true, and probably some weren't, I don't know. But because of that, the association presented an opportunity to give $5,000 in scholarships. So, the sheriff and I sat down, said, "How are we going to do this?" And we said, "We're going to offer it to all of our schools. We're going to do five $1,000 separate scholarships. The students have to apply. They have to do some essays." And they also had to go get a letter of recommendation recommended from the school and from the community. Because as we all know, when you work for a sheriff's department, what's the most priority for us? And it's our community. So, we wanted to make sure that the students recognize that as well. I will tell you that it was a difficult decision on all of the applicants that we got. We got some from Sutter High School, from Live Oak High School, and from Yuba City High School. And all I can say is, we are lucky in our future because these students were bright, they were about the community, they were about their families, and it was tough. And I had board members read the essays and do their applications. I had the sheriff. I had even our new PIO, who is a college graduate herself. And so, there was a collaborative of different people that read it, and we made our decision. So, for the five, they stood out. And the reason they stood out for us was grades. Most of them were, you know, three and higher, some were 4.0, even four and above. Community. You saw the letters that were received by them. It was dedicated to the community, dedicated to their family. I mean, talk about volunteer work, on top of going to school, being active in the school activities, being active in sports, all five of them. And then to read what they're going to do, it's not just go to college and, you know, get a degree to make money. It truly is go to college to do something to make better for the world. We have future dentist, a future park ranger, a future sports reporter, civil engineer, doctor, and all of them all said it wasn't just to go to become that, but also to do something that's going to be better with their community, be better for their families. We have a first-generation student that's going to go to college, pretty amazing. And so, yeah, it was... It's just, it makes me feel good. I have grandkids, and it makes me feel good that maybe my grandkids' lives are going to be in their hands, and I'm very confident we're going to be extremely successful. So, with that, I'm going to announce the students to come up. We'll have Carmen and Alexandria join us, and then we'll take a photo, and then if the families want to join us as well, is that okay?
Yep.
And we'll take photos. So, I had to practice these names because some of them were there, so... But I think I've got it well. So, we're going to do this quickly because we do have a playoff game in Sutter. Go Dogs! Could be Bulldogs, too. Oh, no way, just kidding. They're in the playoffs, too. So, we're going to start with Sutter High School. Guaniza Azuzu Garcia, if you can come up. We'll have you receive your letter from the sheriff with your check. And just stand right here. Second, from Live Oak High School, we have Wana Amaskua. Did I do that right? And from Live Oak High School, Elizabeth Topote. I hope I said that right? Yeah? And then the easiest one, from Yuba City High School, Mia Beltran. The last one, unfortunately, she is ill, so she is not able to make it, but we do have Vice Principal Torres from Yuba City High School going to come up here and receive her certificate and check, but it's Manriet Baines. So, if we can have Alexandria and Carmen come up, and we'll do a photo with them first. Yep, right here. Yeah, show the certificate. Just don't drop your checks. Mr. Torres, can you stand in here, and then we can squeeze the... There we go. Do we want to have their families come up and take a photo? If any of the families want to come up and get a photo with them, or no? No? All right. Well, that's it. Okay.
Well, thank you. I think it's really great. If the undersheriff hadn't have won this scholarship and decided to share it throughout all the schools in the county, there's one school in each supervisor district, one high school. So, it's kind of ironic that that's the way it all worked out, but that's fantastic. And thank you very much for undersheriff Smallwood's work and diligent application for the process in getting the scholarships. Thank you. Congratulations.
Wanda Short, Program Manager, Community Services. Please join the board for a presentation of a service award in honor of your 30 years of employment with Sutter County.
Okay. Okay. Today, we are pleased to recognize and celebrate Wanda Short for her 30 continuous years of service to Sutter County. Over her years of dedicated service, Wanda had worked on a variety of positions in Sutter, Yuba Center Behavioral Health, including psychiatric health facility, PHF, as a newly graduate and licensed pediatric technician, and a nurse in the adult outpatient, followed by 20 years of administration, administrator of the Adult Daily Treatment Program. She served as a nurse in public health that included providing nursing coverage in Sutter County jail. Wanda promoted to the position of Adult Outpatient Case Management Supervisor, a position she held for six years before transitioning to her present position as Sutter County Public Guardian. Wanda's single-minded focus has always been on the care for those in the highest level of acuity and need. She invites those she works with to remember who they are and compassionate honor their basic humanity. Her ability to engage in gender hopes is unparalleled. Her advocacy for Sutter County benefits the staff and improvement evaluation of lives of countless individuals. Wanda's service commended to celebrate her steadfast commitment, dedication, compassion, and longevity of service with Sutter County. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, I don't... No, I don't want...
Another one, they won't talk. Now, I'm sure somebody else... Yes.
So, Wanda is a very special person. I want you to know that you're in the presence of someone who truly heals, and she is with our clients sometimes in their hardest moments. She is there Friday at 8:00 p.m., Saturday at 10:00 p.m., whatever hour she is needed as our public guardian, she is there. If you are in Wanda's care, you are well taken care of, and we appreciate her. No one is ever going to be like Wanda in terms of how she cares for people, and we really want to appreciate your work, Wanda, and celebrate you.
Anybody else?
I'm not one to speak, but I've worked with Wanda for almost 25 years now, and I echo everything that Sarah said. She's been an amazing colleague, coworker, and really advocate for the folks that she works with. So, thank you, Wanda.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Taja Payne, Agency on Aging, Area 4. Please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Sutter County. Nearly 24,000 Sutter County residents are now 60 years of age or older, representing 24% of the total population. Sutter County is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. Sutter County recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May 2024 as Older Americans Month in Sutter County. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you so much, and happy Older Americans Act, Happy Older Americans Month, everyone. So, this year's theme is Powered by Connection, which emphasizes the meaningful impact that social connection and meaningful relationships have, specifically on the older adults in our community. And Agency on Aging, Area 4, has been providing meaningful services for older 50, for over 50 years now, and is a trustworthy resource in the local area for older adults and people with disabilities, veterans, caregivers, and others. And we fund and support many programs in Sutter County, including transportation, information and assistance, legal services, ADRC, which is Aging and Disability Resource Connection, nutrition services such as Meals on Wheels and Dine Around Town programs. And we see in our services, a lot of our program participants are feeling the social isolation and isolation and disconnectiveness from local community because they don't have many older adults, or they don't have family and friends nearby. So, the way we deal with that at Meals on Wheels program is we connect them to the local Aging and Disability Resource Connection, and they provide necessary case management and connection to the local services to support them through that. But we do encourage everyone in the community as well to get involved by volunteering, either at Meals on Wheels, to deliver the meals, or provide friendly calls to them so they feel less lonely, or to provide your feedback on our services or services that are needed in the community. We are currently assessing feedback from the community and are developing a local master plan on aging. So, any feedback is very much appreciated. We'll provide a community survey as well soon, so feel free to reach out to us, and we'll include all that in the local plan on aging. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and what they do for older Americans and us in Sutter County. Us, I say, because I'm now a senior citizen myself. So, anyway, there's a lot of us that we need help as we get older and need a little help keeping in our homes and those kind of things to keep services up. That's fantastic to keep people in their homes and themselves efficient. Thank you.
Matthew Smith and Alex Bumpus, Bike County Ambulance. Please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 19 through the 25th, 2024 as National Emergency Medical Services Week in Sutter County.
Bike County Ambulance and its emergency medical services EMS professionals play a critical role in the community by providing life-saving care and assistance to individuals in need during medical emergencies. EMS professionals include emergency medical technicians, EMTs, and paramedics dedicated to the care to provide rapid competitive or complete and compassionate care to those facing medical crises, often risk their own safety, to ensure the well-being of others. That Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the week of May 19 to 25th, 2024 as National Medical Services Week in Sutter County, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing and honoring the vital contributions to... Contributions of Bike County Ambulance EMS personnel.
Sure. I'd just like to say thank you to the board for recognizing EMS Week. This has been going on for some time, and Bike County Ambulance, it's our big week to really celebrate all of our staff. We're going to have each day as a theme this week, and we're really excited. We'll be posting a lot about it and updating the board on all the activities for next week, and thank you so much.
I'd just like to add, you know, in my former life, I was a volunteer fireman at East Neck, and we're a little further out than a lot of areas, but Bike County Ambulance always tried, we always strive to get those patients, whether in a vehicle accident or heart attack, or some other kind of medical emergency, the help they needed to get them that goal into the hospital so they didn't lose that golden hour, which preserves their lives in many cases. So, they've been doing this for many, many years, and your father before you, so congratulations.
Marnie Sanders, Blue Zones. Please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as National Bike Month in Sutter County. Many residents ride their bikes because it is a healthy and environmentally sound form of transportation. A bike-friendly community has been shown to improve residents' well-being and quality of life. It is also an excellent way to enjoy our beautiful county. Sutter County has over 108 miles of bikeways, and the 10-mile Yuba City Sutter Bike Trail offers a great view of the Sutter Buttes. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May as National Bike Month, and we urge you to share the road safely with bicyclists and encourage everyone to bike with family and friends.
Oh, thank you so much for recognizing May is Bike Month, and my name is Marnie Sanders. I'm the executive director of Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter. We are a health and well-being initiative in our community, and part of health and well-being is being able to provide areas where people can get outside and bike and walk. And so, we just want to thank Sutter County for your support in helping us to advocate and have that infrastructure here and to continue to grow that infrastructure in our community so people have a space to get out and to walk and bike. And I just want to recognize our team and our partners here who help support us in our efforts. And I also want to mention that May 23, we're hosting a community cruise, and we are going to have a contest for bike decorating. Kids will be able to circle a block. It's in Marysville, but it's all for Yuba and Sutter. And there's going to be a bike rodeo with free helmets given out to kids, and we just want to celebrate May as Bike Month, and again, thank our partners with Sutter County and others for your support.
You have a question. We usually have a bike around the Buttes Day. What day is that?
That was in April, like the 15th. Yes. Yes. It was.
Yeah. Should have been May.
There we go.
Well, thank you.
Tanya Byers, Childcare Planning Council. Please join the board for the presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as Childcare Provider Appreciation Month in Sutter County.
Okay. Childcare has provided a safe, nutritious place for enriching and developing the millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy. The future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worth committed to our children's future. The Board of Supervisors and Sutter County, Yuba County hereby proclaim May 2024 as Childcare Provider Appreciation Month in Sutter and Yuba Counties, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities.
Hi, I'm Tanya Byers, and I'm the director for the Childcare Planning Council of Yuba and Sutter Counties, and I'm here with some of my council members, and we just appreciate being able to elevate childcare providers. May is typically when we celebrate teachers, and our childcare providers are also valuable educators, and so, we like to honor and take this opportunity to honor them for all they do for child's growth and development and supporting our families and community. Thank you. Thank you.
Fire Chief John Schalwitz. Please join the board for a presentation of a gold resolution and honor your service to Sutter County.
Congratulations, John. John Schalwitz, after 20-year career as emergency medical technician and firefighter in Sacramento region, joined Sutter County Fire as a battalion chief in 2012 and was named fire chief in 2015. John Schalwitz is an incident commander at multiple large-scale incidents, including a U-2 spy plane crash in the Sutter Buttes and other major fires, as strike team leader, guiding local fire engines to three of the state's largest wildfire operations, section chief for the COVID response and liaison department of water resources officials during the Oroville Dam emergency of 2017. That Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations to John Schalwitz on the occasion as his retirement and causes the names of each member of the affixed to the gold resolution as evidence of the board's individual and collective appreciation for his devotion to the safety of the residents of Sutter County and the well-being of the men and women who provide fire suppression and emergency medical responses services to those residences.
Uh, no. No, I'm just kidding. Anybody who knows me, that's not true. I just want to say thank you to everybody because it takes a team to get here, and they're all back there, and it's all different people. It's been a long ride. But I'm really happy to say I ended my career here. The team here is something special. We do a lot with a little in this county, and every single person in this room knows that, and I respect every single one of you for it. I've worked with one of the best bosses I've ever had, one of the best boards, most reactive and most supportive, but most importantly, and it's the men and the women in the back, they represent... they represent me, and that's why I'm here. And most importantly, most importantly, it's my wife. And the most important thing about this is my pager goes away, and she gets a good night's sleep. So, thank you very much, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John.
I'm trying to think of what disaster have you not been through yet? I mean, I mean, the U-2 crash, I mean, COVID, I mean, you've been through it all, literally. And his leadership's been strong through it all, too. His community involvement's been strong through it all, and it's tough when you're the fire chief, and you know, as five supervisors in a cell, he's getting phone calls, hey, we can't ask you who got in an accident, but is everything okay? You know, is this, is, you know, is the fire getting close to get put out? What kind of fire and so forth? And these calls aren't at 5:00, 6:00 in the evening, they're at midnight, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. It's a non-stop job, his wife can attest to that, and so can the guys up back, but it's been, it's been an awesome ride. I love you as a friend, love you as a coworker, I think you, you, leadership's second to none, you've done a great job, and it's, I'm gonna be sad to see you go, so, but thank you for the last 12 years, thank you.
Chief, I just want to say thank you for your years of dedication, all you've done, and shout out to your team, because you guys are amazing, well, thank each and every one of you, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, John, we're all sad to see you go, but happy for you. John works incredibly hard, works shifts by himself when needed it, to cover at a station when we're shorthanded, and all the, all the folks have done that before, too, in the department, so, good on you for that, but it'll be, it'll be tough without you. Dedication, second to none. A few weeks ago, I came in really early for me, and it was around 6:30, and John was already there working, and there's times I walk out, and his is the last vehicle there, so incredibly dedicated, and on top of that, you know, just running calls all night, and the leadership he's shown, and like he said, there's a lot of issues in Sutter County that are very challenging, and even more challenging with very tight budgets, and he's managed to hold it all together, and we just really appreciate you.
I'd just like to thank John for his years of service, been here a long road, and we appreciate your service and the community, and like, like Mike said, a lot of disasters in the last eight years or so that I can think of that are really big, and, but a lot of things going on all the time with your service in departments, and it's a large county that you're spread over, so, thank you very much.
Staying on, so not only does he oversee the Sutter County Fire Departments, but he also oversees East Nicholas and Pleasant Grove. So, yeah, so it's pretty broad, so, fire marshal for the county, he's an amazing department head who does, he does so much with very, very little, and he, and I, dude, you're amazing, brother.
Michelle Blake, Executive Director, Children and Families Commission, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Sutter County. Over 1,343 babies are born in the county of Sutter each year, and the maternal health and the mental health of women before, during, and after pregnancy is an issue of great concern to women and their families. Many at-risk women may not seek help because they are not informed about perinatal depression and related mood disorders as part of their health care. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Maternal Mental Health Month in the county of Sutter, and calls upon the citizens, government agencies, and public and private institutions and businesses to facilitate increased awareness and education about perinatal depression and related mood disorders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Board. Unfortunately, perinatal mood and anxiety disorders impacts one in three women, yet it doesn't deserve, or receive the attention that it deserves, so we thank you for helping us raise awareness. Together, all of us form a initiative called Blue Shift for Yuba Sutter, and we are here to raise awareness and give additional services and support to women that need it, as well as their families. So, again, we appreciate your support and your awareness, and we would love to ask you to also take a picture with our blue dot, this tiny little thing, which would be showcased, which will be showcased on quite a few of our partners' social media pages to raise awareness with the blue dot for P-Mad Month. Thank you.
Deputy Sheriff Jeff Kohler, Correctional Sergeant Brian Reed Khan, Evidence Technician Elisa Garcia, and Posse Member Dennis Bell, please join the board for a presentation recognizing the Sutter County Sheriff's Office Employees of the Year.
Okay. Come on, come on out here.
The Sutter County Board of Supervisors is proud to recognize Deputy Jeff Kohler as the Sheriff's Office Peace Officer of the Year. Jeff graduated from the Yuba College Police Academy in May of 2008, and then joined the Sheriff's Office in October of the same year. Jeff has worked patrol, detectives, and has served on our search and rescue and dive teams. He has been a range master, officer in charge, and a field training officer while employed at the Sheriff's Office. Jeff also served our country as a member of the United States Navy from 2001 to 2022, retiring as a chief master-at-arms. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors is proud to recognize Sergeant Brian Reed Khan as the Sheriff's Office Corrections Officer of the Year. Brian was hired as a Reserve Corrections Officer in 2014. He served in this capacity for a year before being hired full-time. Brian was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2019, and is currently attending the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Course. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors is proud to recognize Elisa Garcia as the Sheriff's Office Non-Sworn Employee of the Year. Elisa was hired by the Sheriff's Office in 2020 and works as their Evidence Technician. She is also furthering her education through Chico State as she works towards her bachelor's degree. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors is proud to recognize Dennis Bell as the Sheriff's Office Volunteer of the Year. Dennis has been a member of the Sheriff's Volunteer Posse for the past 16 years, and we are honored to recognize him for his contributions to our community.
I don't seem to have the right thing. I don't have the right.
Well, I want to thank each and every one of you guys and ladies for your service, absolutely amazing, great leadership all around. I mean, it's a great team, like I said, teamwork, it, that's the best, and we got the best right here in Sutter County. Thank you, thank you all.
So, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you all as well, that I was able to witness your recognition that was happening at Edel Hall, can't thank you enough, thank you to your entire department, you have your colleagues here. I'd just like to make one quick request, if you guys could all join us for, for a photo op, and we put these individuals in the middle. Sheriff, under Sheriff, you can please join us as well? Come on, come on, don't be shy. And this mic's hot, it's ready for you.
So, I was asked just to say a few words, as it was mentioned, we did have a dinner a couple of weeks back, where we were able to honor them, and I really appreciate you bringing everybody down, because we do have a fabulous group of men and women that serve this community and work at the Sutter County Sheriff's Office, and the four that were recognized, Jeff Kohler wasn't here today, but the four that were recognized were selected by their peers to represent the department in their respective categories, and so just an amazing job by everybody, and those that stand out and that were honored here today. So, give them a round of applause, please. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Sheriff Brandon Barnes and Sutter County Correctional Officers, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 5th through the 11th, 2024 as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Sutter County.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Drew? Okay, today is National Correctional Officers and Employees Week, erasing awareness of the duties of hazard, of sacrifice that is made by correctional officers and correctional personnel. Correctional officers serve 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to safely and securely and humanely house inmates within the county, and often faces the violence and danger. They are brave and courageous individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe. These provide many different services to the county's offenders, and they are deserve of our gratitude. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaims the week of May 5th through 11th as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week, and recognize the outstanding service that these men and women provide to the county. Brandon?
So, I know we have a couple of other presentations, so I'll keep my comments really brief, but, you know, our corrections officers are some of the finest that you'll find throughout the state, and I do have the privilege of traveling around a little bit, and so I can say that with complete confidence. Here's what I'll tell you, when you see a patrol car driving down the street, you have the opportunity to wave to them, they get to go into Starbucks or wherever, and you can offer to buy them a cup of coffee. These folks don't have that luxury, they work 12-hour shifts in a very high-stress environment, and it's just a tremendous commitment that they have to caring for those that are in our custody, making sure that they're getting their medical services, their education services, counseling services, and so forth and so on, right? Religious services, the list goes on, and feeding them and meeting all of our Title 15, Title 24 requirements through the state, just a tremendous job. They probably are inspected more than any other, I would say, unit within the county, by the state, and the grand jury, and everybody else, and so just a phenomenal job year after year, and I thank them for all that they do.
Thank you.
All right, let's try this again, eh? No, uh, thank you again to the Board of Supervisors for the recognition, we make up a very small group of a very large group of men and women working in jails, thank you to the Board of Supervisors, thank you to the sheriff. I think we were often very much invisible until social media presence kicked up, and now people get to see what we do, and that's appreciated, and now be seen, so thank you.
Thank you, you did a good job.
Sheriff Brandon Barnes and Deputy Sheriffs, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Sutter County. The members of the Sutter County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of county residents. It is important that residents know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. National Police Week is a time to recognize the men and women of law enforcement who serve Sutter County. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week, and call upon all residents to recognize those peace officers who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to their community.
Well, first and foremost, you know, thank you, I think that recognition says a lot of it. It's really a time to honor and respect those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms that we all enjoy, and I'm not talking military freedoms, I'm talking about our freedoms here at home in our communities. Sutter County has lost three officers over the course of time, and they're on the Peace Officer Memorial Page, so you can look those up there. Most recently, back in 2018, we lost a K-9 officer as well, and so that's also memorialized there, and so we always recognize and, you know, pay homage to them and the sacrifices that they made, but we also celebrate this week, we celebrate their memories, and we celebrate what we do for this community, and so later tonight, we will be providing dinner for our staff to thank them for their hard work, and then tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Yuba City Police Department right down the street, there will be our local memorial here for our community at 10:00 a.m. It's open to the public, so we encourage everybody to come by and stop by for that, where we will have a reading of the names of all of those that have paid the ultimate price in the Yuba Sutter area, as well as the four officers that died in California last year, and so if you have a time, please come by and check that out tomorrow, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Brandon, I've been to that several times, and it's a very moving ceremony, so I'd encourage anybody that has the time to stop by, Yuba City PD, thank you. Thank you.
Sheriff Brandon Barnes and Dispatch employees, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as Dispatch Appreciation Week in Sutter County.
Okay. This is, uh, the national, uh, the safety and law enforcement deputies, firefighters, and paramedics depend upon the quality and accurate information obtained from citizens who call the Sutter County Dispatch Center. The Sutter County Dispatch Center contributes substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suspense, uh, suspicion of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism while performing their job. Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaims April 14th through the 20, uh, 2024 as Dispatch Appreciation Week in Sutter County, and honors the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the county and citizens safe.
Well, again, thank you for, you know, truly recognizing all aspects of our department today. I will tell you this, you know, our dispatchers, they're amazing people, they have a very stressful job. It's what I like to call multitasking on another level. It's a job that I probably could not do, quite frankly, because they are super busy, but they are the voice you hear on the other end of the phone during some of your darkest times, when you need that calming voice to help you through a crisis, they're there. And as it was mentioned, and the reason I asked Chief Shalowitz to come up, because they don't just handle law enforcement dispatching services, they handle dispatching services for fire, and they do so many other things for us. And so a couple of weeks ago was their acknowledgement, we had a nice week for them, we spoiled them every day of the week with gifts and food and took real good care of them. And so I know they're all working right now, or probably home sleeping, so just acknowledgement to them and to say thank you for all that they do. And John, I don't know if you want to share anything as well, but?
I just want to reiterate the same words. They are the, they're on the other side of our radio, those are the ones that get us what I need, what we need, and they're also the ones talking to you in the, in your worst times. And they have to deal with that stress at a little different level, and they're very busy. So we definitely respect them for what they do, it's a very important part of our first responder chain, the first person that they talk to and most likely the last person that some of these people talk to. So it's great to be able to appreciate them, thank you.
I just like, I just like to say one thing that it's pretty apparent to me, but not to everybody, because I was a volunteer fireman and I see a lot of this stuff, but when you talk to dispatch and they put you on hold, it's not because they're doing something else, they're probably reaching out to fire, to EMS, to the Sheriff's Department to get the people that they need to get them on a road toward your call. So be respectful, be patient, try to be concise, and tell them every detail they need.
Sarah Eberhart Rios, Director of Health and Human Services and Health and Human Services Employees, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sutter County. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental health conditions are prevalent in our, in our county, state, and nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. With effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can and do recover, leading full, productive lives. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sutter County, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Sutter County to support our mental health providers, recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to support their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Well, thank you. One of the things that I just wanted to say kind of real quickly is a recognition that about 23% of Americans have a mental illness, and of that 23%, 55% do not receive treatment. And we know that a lot of that has to do with stigma, and so my message for Mental Health Awareness Month is just to remind folks that you have options. You can get treatment, whether it's through your commercial insurance provider, Medi-Cal provider, us at Behavioral Health, there are folks out there who are able to help you, and, as we stated, treatment works. Thank you.
Sarah Eberhart Rios, and Sutter County Nurses, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 6th through the 12th, 2024, as National Nurses Week in Sutter County.
Coming on down. The American Nurses Association has declared the week of May 6th through the 12th as National Nurses Week and celebrates this year theme cultivating kindness, to honor the various roles of nurses as well as the positive impact nurses have on everyone's lives in Sutter County. The nursing profession is a indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of all patients in Sutter County. Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of May 12, 6th through the 12th, 2024, as National Nurses Week, and ask that all residents of the county join and honor the many nurses whose care for all of us in our, Sutter County.
Hi, my name is Katrina Whitaker, I'm the Director of Public Health Nursing here during Sutter County, so we thank the board for recognizing all those nurses that live in, work in, and work for Sutter County in many capacities, whether it's your home, the hospitals, the psychiatric facilities, and clinics, they're there, we're here to help build and keep Sutter healthy and safe.
I'd just like to say, nurses are dear to my heart, my mother was a nurse, and my new daughter-in-law is a nurse, and works in right now.
Diane Adams, Yuba College Foster Kinship Care Education, social workers in foster care and county foster parents, please join the board for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as National Foster Care Month in Sutter County. Sutter County relies on foster homes due to the number of traumatized children found to be at risk and being removed from their own homes because of sexual abuse, physical abuse, parental absence or incapacity, or exploitation. Sutter County recognizes that all children need love, support, security, and a safe place to call home. Sutter County has children placed with foster parents in the counties of Sutter, Butte, Contra Costa, Fresno, Sacramento, Placer, Merced, Tahima, and Yuba, who have opened their hearts and their homes to the children of Sutter County in times of crisis, providing a safe, loving, and supportive home environment due to their commitment to the needs of children. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Foster Care Month.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing foster youth. May is actually, or also National Foster Care Awareness Month, and just a few statistics for that, sorry, allergies are killing me, there are a little over, a little under 400,000 kids in foster care in our United States, and there's only 208,000 homes, so if anybody wants to sign up, we can hook you up here, okay?
Thank you, Diana, for accepting this proclamation, and Diana works very hard for us at Yuba College, she educates all of our new foster parents and ongoing foster parents, who also known as resource parents, and we have a couple here today, so thank you too for your work with our Sutter County children. And so this is, this is a really special time to recognize people, because without our foster parents, and we really appreciate you doing it in our community, so we can keep our kids in our community, with families in our community. As you heard, we have kids placed in a lot of different counties, and we really appreciate those that can be placed closer to home, so we can work with the foster parents and the parents as well. So anyone who wants to be a foster parent can reach out to Ms. Amber here, who is, she approves all of our homes in Sutter County and does a really excellent job, and works very hard to accomplish that in a timely manner, so we can get kids placed timely with some resource parents, hopefully with kin who they know, but if it's not, it's other foster parents, we really appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of Board of Supervisors. State law prohibits that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay, moving on, consent calendar items 1 through 14.
Excuse me, Sheriff, we do have three public comment cards.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Our first public comment card is for Tina Hessong.
I don't think the mic's on.
Hi, I'm Tina Hessong with New California State. On April 12th, 2024, the Supreme Court ruled that individuals, developers, and home builders in California may protest impact fees commonly imposed by cities and counties to supposedly pay for new roads, schools, sewers, or other improvements as unconstitutional taxes. I have a couple of questions. Are you considering terminating impact fees after the U.S. Supreme Court decision calling them an unconstitutional tax? How much in impact fees have you charged over the last 10 years? If you are not going to terminate impact fees, how do you plan to justify them as fees rather than taxes? And have you set up a process to handle refunds to residents that were inappropriately assessed impact fees in the past? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Rumilia Eads, I am an IHSS provider and a UDW member. I care for my son Jeffrey Eads, who is 39 years old and soon to be 40. I am one of over 1,300 care providers right here in Sutter County. Excuse me, we are currently in the middle of negotiations for a new contract with the county, and I am here to let you know that IHSS providers, like me, need a living wage that allows us to carry on the important work that we do. There is a rapidly growing care crisis in California, and it is time you take responsibilities for those who need care in Sutter County, and that starts with paying caregivers a dignified wage to ensure there are enough care workers to provide vital care for those who need it. Our work is crucial to our clients and their well-being, but it has fallen through the cracks for decades, and IHSS providers have fought tooth and nail to get the respect and dignity they deserve. And just like Mr. Condon said, if it wasn't for family, where would they be? Thank you.
Our last speaker is Tony Farley.
Yeah, I'm next, Tony Farley, from South Sutter County Hay Park. Chief Shawitz, the Pawn Star, Rick Hara Star, right there, in his classic uniform. You look more fancier than, than Kay Parker right there, look more fancier in her uniform. Hi, Fire Chief. I've got Missy Fire Chief, you're going to Sacramento County, oh yes, going to Sac Town, Sacramento. And everything, everything Sheriff Department for dispatch, corrections, and police, police world make, I'll be at the police department tomorrow honoring all law enforcement officers who have died, loved, and the care of citizens of California. Hello, new county council lawyer from Glen County, I appreciate you too. And you, Chuck Smith, the best, the best CL, CL ever, and the best sheriff of all world, Steve Smith, best chief ever, best CL ever, and I assure us, I mean, I assure Sheriff Brandon Barnes, the best sheriff ever, ever, and who, Rob Marine Colonel right there? Thank you, Sarah Eberhart Rios, you too, thank for your service.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, that's it, right? Okay, moving on, consent calendar items 1 through 14. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or which prior policy direction has been given to the staff that only require routine action by the board. The chair will be advised, the audience, that the matter may be adopted as one total motion, however, the board may at its choose option or upon the request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. And that's 1 through 14. Roll call.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
And the on, we have two, um, public hearings.
Public hearing to consider Project U 23-0015, an amendment to Article 25 of the Sutter County zoning code to incorporate updates regarding permit types and findings. Introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 1500, waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and adopt the ordinance.
Good afternoon, R1 Watt Development Services. The item before you is a proposed amendment to the Sutter County zoning code to incorporate recommended updates to permit types and findings, which is Article 25 of the zoning code. To give you some general information on Article 25, this is the permit types and findings section of the zoning code. The section establishes the general requirements and findings for obtaining various permits and approvals as provided for in the zoning code. Some examples of these are the findings for development and flood hazard zones, permit types and findings for zoning clearances, develop, design review, administrative permits, use permits variances in development agreements, and amendments to zoning code, specific plans, and the general plan. To provide you with some background on this process, in May 2020, staff presented a previous version of the proposed update to this section, of which the Planning Commission recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. Public opposition was received from the public during the Board of Supervisors' review process, and at that time, no decision was made. Since then, staff took a more thorough look at Article 25, and staff has continued to work with the public and legal counsel to further clarify the proposed amendments, which have resulted in the amendments before you today. The most significant changes were specific to providing consistent organization and labeling of this section, separation of zoning clearance and administrative permit general requirements and findings, clarification of requirements and findings for each permit type, and also clarification of which permit types are considered ministerial and discretionary. Staff has evaluated the proposed amendment in compliance with SEQA guidelines and has determined that the proposal is considered a minor amendment to the zoning code specific to permit types and findings, and does not have the potential to cause significant effect on the environment. on the environment. Therefore, the activity is considered exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061b3 of the guidelines. Staff believe this proposed amendment meets the intent of the initial direction of the Board of Supervisors and that the amendments are consistent with the general plan, promote the growth of the county in an orderly manner, and will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the area or to the general welfare of the county. Therefore, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors approve the project with the findings listed in the staff report and as shown in the related staff report and attachments.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We're opening a public hearing. Is there any speaker cards? No speaker cards. Okay. We'll close the -- is there any audience want to address the board? No? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion. Mike? Carm? Nope.
I don't have any questions at this time.
You need a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Let's do the roll call, please.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Will the clerk please read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending Chapter 1500 of the ordinance code to incorporate updates regarding permit types and findings within unincorporated Sutter County.
Thank you. Item number 16.
Public hearing to consider Project U 24-0011, development agreement between the County of Sutter and the Natomas Basin Conservancy to allow the conservancy to modify existing agricultural lands and restore, enhance, use, and maintain the lands as environmental conservation areas within the unincorporated county, located generally northeast and southeast of the intersection of Powerline Road and Sankey Road.
The project before you is a request for a development agreement between Sutter County and the Natomas Basin Conservancy for several parcels located within Sutter County's portion of the Natomas Basin. The conservancy is requesting a development agreement to allow the conservancy to modify existing agricultural lands and restore, enhance, use, and maintain the lands as environmental conservation areas within the unincorporated county. To provide you with some background, in 2003, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan and the HCP Plan documents and EIR. The City of Sacra Minnow, who is also an HCP signatory, also adopted the plan and the EIR. The Natomas Basin Conservancy serves as a plan operator to implement the HCP consistent with the plan approval and its implementation agreement. In 2002, the Board of Supervisors approved a development agreement between Sutter County and the conservancy, which very similar to the development agreement before you today. The agreement required Sutter County to review and approve all restoration and enhancement activities that resulted in the conversion of agricultural land to manage marsh, including aquatic and upland habitats. The development agreement was approved with a 20-year term, which expired in 2022. To remain in compliance with the requirements of the HCP, take practical steps to continue compliance and assist with keeping costs under control, the conservancy is requesting the approval of a similar development agreement with the county. The conservancy has targeted portions of the Bennett North and Nestor Tracks, both located in South Sutter County, as the next managed marsh projects. The two projects include a new managed marsh area and the renovation of an existing marsh complex. And these sites are located to the northeast and southeast of the intersection of Powerline Road and Sankey Road. The surrounding area is agricultural land primarily cultivated with rice. Staff believe the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan policies and zoning code requirements and findings. County Council and Development Services staff have reviewed the proposed development agreement and have no issues with the document as proposed. Therefore, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors approve the proposal with the findings listed in the staff report and as shown in the staff report and attachments. Staff is available if you have any questions.
I would just ask the staff if we could bring up page 413. It's a map that shows the properties we're talking about. Just before we ask the public for comments. Okay. We'll open the public hearing. And is there any public comments? Nope. From the audience? Nope. Okay, we close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Mike? Carm? Okay. Can we get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item number 17. Donna Johnson.
Approval to appoint Sean Withrow to the Pleasant Grove Cemetery District Board of Trustees.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Gina Graham, Assistant Clerk of the Board. The item before you today is the appointment of Sean Withrow to the Pleasant Grove Cemetery District Board of Directors. There's currently one vacancy on the Pleasant Grove Cemetery District in compliance with the MEAD Act. A vacancy notice was posted and advertised. Our office received two applications, and interviews were conducted by Supervisor Carm Baines, and Sean Withrow is being recommended for appointment.
Okay. That's item number 17. To the chair. Yeah, go ahead, Carm. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Thank you. Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 18.
Approval of an agreement with the City of Livock and City County Fire Department CSAF to provide fire protection and related services to the City of Livock for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2029.
Thank you, John. This will be your last thing with us, I believe, correct?
Yeah, so I figured I'd keep everybody here about 40, 45 minutes, go over this agreement, just to make sure we all get to know each other a little bit better. Honorable Chair, members of the board, what you have in front of you is an agreement that has taken about two years to get to this point, but we feel that it's a great agreement. It continues our relationship with the City of Livock for fire services that has been extremely positive, and I feel that this agreement negotiated by myself and CEO Smith has really just extended and ensured that we are not losing any funds in the agreement that we have with the City of Livock and ensuring that we have a good level of service being provided to the constituents. So I just want to highlight some real quick things with this agreement. We continued along with services at the level that we did, and with that, we went from a 75% of services being paid for by the City of Livock to an 85%. And then we also are getting all of the cost for one battalion chief being covered by the City of Livock. That's 100% of cost. Previously, they were paying 1/3. So this is a good change. It's allowing us to free up some funds within the Service Area F budget to hopefully work forward and use it for better things in the future. I'm here for any questions, and CEO Smith's here if there's any other questions on the agreement.
Any clue?
No, I just want to comment, I want to thank the City of Livock, I want to thank John and our CEO, Steve Smith. It's a great contract. So hats off to the City of Livock and their city council members, and you, John.
Thank you. Carm?
Move to approve.
Motion? Motion and second. Oh, first we forgot to ask if there are speaker cards on this item. No? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 19.
Approval of a salary range adjustment for the Chief Deputy District Attorney for Management 51 to Management 55, and approval of a related salary range adjustment for the district attorney.
Good afternoon, Chairman and honorable members of the board. Veronica Baumgartner, interim HR Director. The Human Resources Department received a request from the District Attorney's Office to review the Chief Deputy District Attorney classification and salary in preparation for a new recruitment. We found there is a little pool of viable candidates, and all areas within our surrounding counties and the state as a whole are sharing the same small recruitment pool. A significant salary adjustment is necessary to recruit any possible candidates for this really crucial position in the DA's office. The position was previously filled with an internal candidate who has since left after four months of being in the position for outside employment. We since opened the recruitment, however, we have received no qualified candidates. Feedback from some of the potential candidates have confirmed that the salary is much too low for the amount of work that is needed to be done. We conducted a salary survey of our seven comparable counties, and we found that this position is approximately 37.7% below our comparable market. The change that we're requesting here today will bring the salary range for this position to approximately 13.8% below market. Increasing this will result in related adjustments to the compensation also for our elected district attorney per Section 4.1.2 of the Sutter County rules governing employee compensation benefits and working conditions. The salary schedule for our elected department heads shall be maintained so that their base salary at step one shall be at least 10% higher than the base of their lowest -- sorry, comparison of their next highest paid subordinate in that classification. The fiscal impact, the salary range for the Assistant Chief Deputy District Attorney amounts to $25,981 per year, and there will be no fiscal impact for this fiscal year as the position has been vacant and there's been sufficient salary savings. The change to the salary range for the district attorney amounts to $25,109 per year, and these will be absorbed within the existing budget authority for the department as well. And the DA is here if you have any questions for either of us.
Could we bring up page 45, please? There it is. That's the salary survey that you were talking about, and it's pretty obvious from looking at that that in Buick County, the Chief Deputy District Attorney makes 14.7. You know, it's a pretty low salary schedule on Sutter County, and I agree with what you guys are doing. Any questions from the board?
No, I just want to say that, you know, this is something I do support, but at the same time, this is something I expect. I know we wear a lot of hats. I mean, as a supervisor, I wear a ton of different hats. And, you know, it's going to get really tight, really, really tight. So, and I know this is what we have to do to get out there and get some really good candidates and get them into work with us and be part of our team, but we're going to expect a lot of them, you know, a lot out of them. I'm hoping we get some good qualified guys out of this, ladies out of this, or whatever. And, but I do support it.
To the chair.
Yeah. Move to approve.
Did our DA want to say?
There you go.
I physically can't do it all, so we need this.
Thank you. Carm, you had a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any speaker cards? Nope. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 20.
Approval of a renewal agreement, employment agreement with Stephen M. Smith as county administrator effective May 14th, 2024.
On August 27th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors appointed Steve Smith to the position of county administrator and appointed him for a three-year contract. On January 15th, 2022, the Board approved a three-year contract renewal with Mr. Smith. The proposed agreement supersedes this previous agreement. Mr. Smith has more than 21 years' experience in county government and has been employed with Sutter County for nearly 15 years, beginning in 2009 as a deputy county administrator. In 2006, he was appointed as an interim assistant county administrator and promoted to that position in 2017, and has since served as CIO since 2019. And he has served in all capacities and with every department in all of those roles that he's had. During his tenure, he has built a superb department head team with very limited resources. He empowers our employees to excel beyond expectations with results in impactful projects such as the mental health first aid film, the award-winning project, many award-winning projects and programs such as Harmony Village and the Join Us program. He consistently represents the county and the board in the media via television, radio, newspapers, online, and at community events such as the State of California Address, and has led dozens of town hall meetings to partner with the community on the pressing needs in their areas. Under his leadership, Sutter County developed new fiscal policies for the Board of Supervisors' adoption, ensuring progress towards Government Finance Officers Association standards, making sure those are achieved, pension liability payments are accelerated, and modernizing technologies such as our Workday implementation. Additionally, Mr. Smith's leadership, under his leadership, the county secured approximately $70 million in grant funding over the previous four years to ensure critical community needs are met. The agreement includes a salary increase to approximately 5% -- sorry, to a salary increase to approximately 5% above the current highest paid department head. You will see in the attached salary survey, the range for this position is 31.9% below market. The average salary for this position in our comparable agencies is $289,308 annually. The attached agreement initially sets the salary at $245,609, which is approximately still 15% below market, and does provide for an increase in 2025 and 2026. I would like to say, and I think on behalf of a lot of my department heads, he is -- Steve is always available for guidance and to, you know, answer our questions, always very level-headed, kind, and from, you know, the reviews we were able to give on him, it was nothing but positive feedback, and we all feel very supported with having him as our leader. Going to the fiscal impact, the salary and benefits for the CIO officer are included in the 2324 adopted budget and will be included in the 2425 recommended budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for public, any speaker or nothing? Mike?
So, when this was put on the agenda, you know, you look on social media and you kind of hear people talking, and I'm just curious if people have really looked in the background in Sutter County and Steve Smith and seen what he's done and what's going on with Sutter County. Six CAOs in 10 years before Steve. Six. When I came on, we had Scott, and I worked with Scott a little. And then Steve came on his interim. We fell in love with the guy. Department heads, everyone fell in love with him, with his leadership, with his ability just to -- to -- he does the research. He helps you out with the research. He's there for the late night calls, middle of the night calls. He's the last guy out of the office. It's Friday at 8:30, he's still in the office. Once again, wears a lot of hats, just like the rest of us. I've been to many conferences over the last five years. I've met a ton of CAOs from many different counties, large and small, and there's not another one out there that cares for his community like Steve there. I can guarantee you that. And there's some good ones out there, but we're very lucky. And the last thing I want to do is to lose this guy because they get recruited like that, and they're gone. That's why I'd hate to even know the average, I believe I was told one time, it's about three to five years on average for a CIO in a county, and they just get plucked up because they're -- at any given moment, out of the 58 counties in the state of California, there's always two or three openings, I believe. But it is -- it's incredible. And the last thing I want to bring up, three times we had, he had the chance for a pay raise, three times, and all three times, he denied us. And this time, we didn't want to deny him. This is something that we, with the negotiations and so forth, we felt, it's what we could do, it was very responsible for us as county stewards, to keep this individual. could do, it was very responsible for us as county stewards, to keep this individual in his leadership role, and hopefully he sticks around for another ten years, I'm hoping. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Carm?
Yes, I haven't had an opportunity to, to work with any other CAO in this capacity. I'm just finishing up my fourth year as a county supervisor, and I'll tell you, it's been a true honor and privilege to work under your leadership. I mean, you've always been the voice of reason, I'm very level-headed, but I, I have seen what you do in the administrative office, the people that you've surrounded yourself with, and the amount of respect that you have for your fellow colleagues or your employees and the respect that they have for you. So, um, this has been a long time, and it's coming, sorry it's taken this long, wish we could offer you more, but, um, it's the least we could do right now, and, um, so, I'd like to move to approve item twenty.
Uh, before you do that, Carm, I'd like to say, I don't think, huh?
I just did.
No, I know, but I'd like to say a couple things.
You can say a couple things.
I haven't had a chance yet. I always let you guys go first. Uh, first of all, I'd like, uh, four, four, nine brought up piece, page. But Steve, I, I want to say that it's been an honor and privilege working with you, and, you know, Steve is, we had a revolving door here before Steve came in, in this county, and it wasn't good for our community. And there's not a single department head, I don't think, that loves or respects Steve because he works with them to find solutions to difficult problems at times. And I'd like to thank him for all this work in the past, and I, we have a motion by Supervisor Baines. Through the chair, I'd like, I, I forgot the most important thing. I just wanted to thank your family for their support because I know what it's like, I mean, literally, when he's on vacation, or any of us, anyone here, departments, when you're on vacation, you're still helping with the county. You know, it might be a quick, a quick text back or whatever or something, but, um, your family puts up with a lot of it, and for those that, like I said, are going to ask a lot of questions, I would look into the fact that this pay raise is going to equate to just about what the CAO was making almost eight years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So, almost eight years ago. So, what I'm getting at is, I just want to throw, I had to throw that in there. Back to what my colleague Supervisor Baines said, I wish we could do more, I really wish we could, but this is down the road in ten years. All right? See, we give him the thumbs up, look at that. He said he can change that contract to ten years. All right, I second the motion.
A motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now we have Scott Powell, Economic Development Director, presentation overview of economic
Mr. Chair, honorable council members, my name is Scott Powell, I'm the Economic Development Director for Sutter County. Per council member, or excuse me, board member Ziegemeyer asked for a presentation on economic development, so, uh, going to take you through a handful of slides, I was told I had eight minutes, and I figured I'd go about ten X over that, so, um, in real reality, about ten, fifteen minutes here, so appreciate your attention to this. The goal is, is it'll fall somewhere in between, you liked it as well as Hamilton, you'll want to watch it again and again, and it was a colossal waste of the next twelve minutes of your life. So, with that of trying to put together a program, looking through the, you had to looking through the board's priorities, and there's three here that are really going to kind of speak to what I'm going to be talking about today. And to quote Peter Drucker, what gets measured gets done. So you'll see at the end, which goes to bullet number two, you'll see a scorecard, you had to kind of measure the progress we're making in economic development, and using that really as a baseline to establish a program for when we're starting from zero. You know, number one, clearly I'm here, so we can already cross that one off, and working on some land entitlements as well when we start talking about, we start talking about, you know, the attraction piece about site readiness as well. So, with that, moving on, um, really before we get going, there's really four things that make an economy grow. Everybody thinks there's a lot that goes into it, and the good news is, is you didn't even have to take Economics one oh one in college to really track this because it really, two of them falls under, uh, you know, new companies, and the other two follow into personnel. So the first one is increase in company activity. So new companies coming in, that's what most people think about economic development, it's actually a very, very small piece of it. More likely you're going to see, you know, companies coming in and growing. Improving technologies, companies figuring out ways and devising strategies to be more efficient in how and which they deliver their goods and services. On the human side, increase the human capital, really more workers becoming more efficient. Longer you have time in service, the better you are at your job, and then growing your labor force as well. So people that aren't working, them returning into the workforce, or new people moving into the community are really four ways, are really the only four ways in an economy grows. There's a lot of different ways each of those feed into it, but those are your four major buckets that feed into you, how you grow an economy. And as you think about what Paul Collier, who's an Oxford economist out of England, says, "Economic growth isn't a cure-all, but lack of economic growth is a kill-all." As somebody who's spent time in the Upper Midwest, started, started my economic development career in the early two thousands within, uh, within Michigan and seeing what a decade of no growth looks like, it's not a situation we want to be in. And even within that state where areas were declining, there were areas who invested heavily in economic development and really saw their communities grow and thrive, and have continued to do so to this day. But looking at the kind of the key economic constituents, we haven't seen the county grow into the level in which we'd like. Really, since the beginning of the pandemic, the population of Sutter County has actually shrunk. It's shrunk more than our neighboring communities, and it actually has shrunk more as a percentage than the state of California. You can see part of that intuitively, looking at the level or lack there of, you know, homes being built in the area, and then also a median income. So when you think about spending of, whether it's your favorite bar, restaurant, or business, if people don't have disposable income in which to spend, there's that money that doesn't recirculate through the economy, and we haven't seen that as well. So we haven't really started off as, we've kind of lost to our neighboring areas, and you can see places like Yuba County, that's grown by almost five percent, which is four X the, you know, the state of California over the past decade. It puts, puts us in a more difficult position. And if you look at these, just these numbers, you've never been to this area and don't know, if you're a company, where are you going to want to be? Are you going to want to be in a place that's growing, or you want to be a place that's shrinking? Do you want to be in a place where the, where people's income is growing, is growing, or do you want to be a place where it's not? And so we need to really be thinking about, how do we change the trajectory of our economy to change these type of things? So what I'm going to lay out here is a framework, oops, hope I go the right direction, going through kind of five key components. I'm going to touch on each of these really quick. So, starting off with site readiness, everybody thinks of attraction, new companies coming in. A site selector who advises a, advises companies on where they want to go, a gentleman by the name of Jay Gardner, used to always say, "No product, no project." If we don't have sites for a company to go into or a company to grow, we're not even on the matrix. From my experience, about eighty percent of projects are going to go into an existing space, about another eighteen percent are going to go into something that's already planned and is waiting to be developed or is already under construction, and that last two percent are, are going to go into that true pure greenfield, and a lot of times it's because it's such a large project or something so specialized, what they need doesn't exist anywhere else. So really identifying where are those growth corridors, and what are those handful of areas that we can put our time, energy, and limited resources to bring them online so development can occur within the, within the county? Moving on to business retention and expansion, there's about thirty-four hundred units of government, probably about twenty-seven hundred of them have some form of economic development. I would say probably twenty-six hundred ninety-eight have a business retention and expansion program. This is really the core of what goes into an economic development program. This is working with your existing companies, helping them grow, overcome obstacles, and that's just not on the regulatory side. It's plugging them into state resources, federal resources, local resources, their universities, or providing them other research institutions, and then also networking them within the community so that they can be, be a stronger business, are more connected, so when they start thinking about how and which they want to grow their business, they're thinking about doing it right here in our community as opposed to going somewhere else. And for the other forty-nine states, their economic development solution is to pull companies out of California. We need to be very, very deliberate in growing and retaining these businesses and helping them survive to ensure that, uh, you know, we have businesses that'll be here to continue to grow. With that, as well as marketing, and this really comes down to, you need a front door, you know, website so people understand who you are, your value proposition, how and which to connect, but also that search engine optimization, being we're the only Sutter County in the U.S. helps, but absent that, it's like we don't even exist. So getting, getting this set up in a thoughtful and strategic way is vitally important. And this also communicates too, is a lot of times I'll hear electeds talk about, well, my community is open to, you know, is open for business. We're open for business eight to five Monday through Friday. You need to be open to business, to be able to communicate how you can help a company be successful, and so they can see that yourself and themselves and your community, not the other way around. And that's really changing a mindset and everything you do within the DNA to be open to business as opposed to being open for business. Workforce development, this is vitally important, it's becoming a lot more important in the economic development world, but this really goes to how do we invest into our human capital? How do we retain those graduates coming out of high school and our college system to keep them here because they are going to be those that are sitting on the dais, those that are working for the community and doing everything else there? That is going to be our best source of future labor is retaining those individuals. But also too, how do we upskill and train those individuals so that they're workforce-ready to, you know, to be that workforce that our, you know, our companies need, and allow them to move up the income chain, to get off social services, and to provide a living wage for their families as well? And that comes from enhancing their skills, which communicates into a larger and more robust economy. So first and foremost is really understanding what programs are there, what are the needs of our businesses, start defining those gaps, and then marrying those two together. And then finally, revenue enhancement. This isn't a traditional economic development function, but as we heard multiple times, we all get to wear many hats. So I've spent some time as a lobbyist granted at the state level, so truly focusing and aligning our, you know, our efforts as a county and making sure it aligns and figuring out where those opportunities align within the state and federal resources as well, and making sure that we're strategic and tactical to go after those funds to, it's not going to offset any revenue shortfall, but it's going to enhance how and which we deliver vital government services to our, to our constituency. So, you know, from this, I know, you know, the chair and Supervisor Baines were in Washington DC, we submitted for, you know, for congressional project funding requests to our congressional delegation, worked very closely with multiple departments specifically on this one, our sheriff's office, fire, you know, emergency management, community development on Robbins, our district attorney and our Health and Human Services, and our budget team with the CAO's office, to come up with four and build out that justification. They've been submitted, we're hoping, fingers crossed, we'll hear on the top two by the end of the month, and the next two, hopefully by the Fourth of July, as it's going through our congressional process. So, um, something that we want to continue to do and refine and come up with a strategic funding plan so we can be, you know, a little less ad hoc and a little more strategic when we do this next year, the year after, and, uh, you know, and also identify those opportunities that we're not catching now. So as we talked about, what measures gets done, this is the scorecard that I've come up, and again, this is a framework as we're building out an economic development program from zero. Some of these numbers might seem a little soft, some might seem a little aggressive, but until we get out there and start doing it, we're not sure where this is going to be. So spending the next, really twelve to fifteen months building that out, and then coming back with, this is a thoughtful and deliberate strategy on how and which we're going to keep evolving the economy within, within Sutter. On top of that as well, we also have some qualitative, I really hate yes or no's, but can't really measure, did we do a website other than, you know, was it binary, did we do it or did we not? Coming up with some growth corridors, probably around Highway twenty to figure out where are other areas in a county with seventy percent of floodplain? Development only makes sense in a handful of areas, so let's be strategic on those, laser-focused, and marshal our resources across departments to make those become a reality. So, going forward, ways in which you can help me do my job better. I know everybody on this, you know, on the board can measure their time in this county by generations, I measure mine still in weeks and days. So introductions, I know this, I know the market well through the greater Sacramento area, I've got great contacts nationally, I need your help with those locally. Educating me on some of the backstories of what goes on, who's who, and why things are the way they are, properties that aren't on the market, help me understand where those are and bring those on. And then I've worked very closely with, with Supervisor Baines on, you know, making sure that we're, we're being very, very targeted with CACOG, and so we can realize dollars not only today, but five, ten, twenty years down the line. And while the mosquito vector district, I'm sure, is very important and we don't want people to get yellow fever, probably can't help you a lot there, but stuff like RCRC, um, you know, and some of the other groups, where I can offer some thoughts, some insight, and help also leverage the different departments to be that go-between, to make sure when you go to these boards, that you're educated, informed, you have talking points, and you're ready to represent this county at a high level. So with that, that is how I'm looking at building out the economic development program here for Sutter County over the next twelve to eighteen months. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Any audience first, I'm sorry.
Seeing none? Carm?
I just want to say, great presentation, Scott, that we did have the opportunity to go back to Washington DC and I met with Congressman Lamoff, uh, for the first time we talked about the community project funding and the four that you brought up there. I think we had great presentations. In addition to that, that you bringing in our consultant that's, you know, I guess, the feet on the ground there in DC, everything worked out great, so I want to thank you for coordinating that and look forward to, um, the outcome of those meetings. Thank you for presentation.
Mike?
I, I just want to say, great job, Scott, so far. You know, Scott, I, when you first came in here, you said, "Mike, what, where should I first start?" I said, "With the Farm Bureau." I said, "We got to start with the Farm Bureau because it's very imperative because we are an ag-based community." And, but at the same time, we have to have some sort of growth, and I know houses, but I didn't say houses, I'm talking some sort of commercial industrial growth. I want good paying jobs here in Sutter County. I know a fast food job, twenty dollars an hour, but we're talking great jobs, and we could have that here. We have, we have areas that are not in a flood zone, but like we mentioned, along Highway twenty, that's out of a FEMA flood zone, but we work hand in hand with the Farm Bureau, and we see what makes sense to the county to hold the community, and we work with something. But he's been in a few meetings that we've arranged. Once again, you wore a lot of hats, Scott, love it, great job, keep it going. Like I said, we'll see where we're at here in the next few months, but a lot of good things happening. Perfect.
So Scott, I just had a couple of questions. What do you think of our greater, greatest opportunities and our greatest challenges in the next couple of years for economic development?
So, Chair, I think some of the, you know, the greatest opportunities is really figuring out where do those sites, you know, specific sites go for real estate? Sutter Point especially, but looking at where does infrastructure make sense? And in understanding right now that industrial slowed at seven percent interest rates, it's really tough to build a hundred million dollar building. But that actually plays to our benefit because that gives us time in which to go through and make sure we can drag infrastructure or come up with some strategic ways in which to, to bring, you know, to bring those on. The struggle of it as well is we don't control a lot of that infrastructure and coming up with it, but, you know, already spending time with, you know, with Neil and Arwin and coming up, what are some creative ways we can come up with ways in which to bring land into the, you know, onto development and make sure that it's, it's ready for these opportunities, um, you know, is a way in which we can overcome those challenges. But given that lack of development, everybody said the challenge is we have seventy percent of floodplain. Well, that's, that's great, we've got thirty, we know we've got thirty percent of the land to work with. So, um, you know, I used to be a stockbroker my previous life, and we were taught, if you give somebody more than ten options, they won't make a choice. So we've already taken off seventy percent of those choices, so gives us that opportunity in which to run. I think some of the other challenges is really workforce, same thing of being financially challenged. The Workforce Investment Board, you know, is running programs that were designed in the nineteen nineties to get people that couldn't find a job and getting them into, into the workforce. Unfortunately, they're training people for poverty wages, that's not our, we, that's not our workforce board's problem, that's everybody's. So how do we take those and look at not only what they're doing in the community college, but what is Calbright doing? There is major emphasis on the apprenticeships, what are our unions doing, and being thoughtful and strategic and deliberate? The fact that we're so well-connected, interconnected in this county provides a great level of opportunity that a lot of our bigger counties aren't going to have the opportunity to leverage.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Seeing none, thanks, Scott.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Next is item number twenty- Next is item number 22, Steve Smith, the county administrator, approval letter of support for Habitat for Humanity, UBA Sutter, be chosen as host for 2025 Jimmy and Rosalyn Carter Work Project. Steve?
Okay, thank you, honorable Chair and supervisors. This is a pretty easy one, but wanted to get on here for your approval and consideration is for a letter of support, as you mentioned, to host the 2025 Jimmy and Rosalyn Carter Work Project. We have representatives here from Habitat for Humanity, John and Karen, so I don't know if they'd like to say a few words, but it would be great if, if the board would support this letter in seeing if we can have the event here in 2026, I believe.
Good, John?
Yeah, this is a really rare opportunity for Habitat for Humanity. It is a east coast company, and you see Carter builds throughout the east coast pretty normally. And at this point, we did submit an application, we were, you had to be invited, we were invited by Habitat International. Just to kind of put a bit of a scale together, when you see a Carter build, you build, you're essentially trained to build 30 to 36 homes in five days. It's a, it's a major spectacle, takes a huge amount of planning, and a lot of support. And so, this would cause the people that are now representing Jimmy and Rosalyn, or Garth and Tricia, and they would cause other celebrities to come with them, as well as corporate heads, for, it's pretty normal to see CEOs for FedEx, or Home Depot, they'll bring a whole team into the community. We don't have enough places for them to stay, so we'll show them everything that we have on both sides of the river, to get this kind of a team to be here, and we'll have a week with them. And it's just a, an opportunity we think would be, you know, putting us on the map, our community as a whole. The property that we're looking at is surplus land that the county of Yuba had, in the Park Circle area, next to Yuba College. So it'll be a setting where they're going to convert a park, will replace the existing park with new, but there'll be 75 lots when built out, and all affordable housing. I actually think it'll fit really well with Beal Housing needs that they have for staff out there as well. So, this letter of support joins a letter of support that the county of Yuba produced. Supervisor Baines helped get the ball rolling on this, and it just shows the folks from Habitat International, that the community is able, we have capacity, we could do this. And I just want to caveat that with, they responded in saying that we were in the top three, the finalists. Normally it goes to big urban centers, but we got their attention, and they've changed in our designating specific rules set aside for Carter builds. And so, they're going to come out and visit anyway, and we're going to have people from HCD at the same visit, so we're really excited. It's, to us, it's a, it's a, it's a huge transformative moment, yeah.
I think that's great, John, I think it's really great to have, I mean, all the work that Habitat for Humanity's done for rural community, for housing, for poor and disadvantaged people. It's absolutely incredible, and this is one more step in that direction.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second, any speaker card, seeing none? Call?
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, John. Steve, anything you would like to add?
Yes, thank you. So, for announcements for day, today, a couple of things. We, earlier, the board approved in the consent calendar, that the budget hearings would be moved to June 18th at 10:00 AM. Previously, they were going to be August 20th, they're here in, in this building, but just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. Also, we do, it wasn't on the agenda, because it was last moment, but we have an opening on the Natomas Basin Conservancy Board. Those are difficult to find at times. I think there's a stipend for that one, if anyone's interested, but looking for some good citizens to serve on that. And then I also have a statement, a very brief statement, from Supervisor McKelley, he'd like me to read on his behalf. "To my fellow citizens, I want to apologize for my absence from responsibilities as county supervisor these past several weeks. Until recently, I've been undergoing treatment for several serious medical conditions in a hospital in Sacramento. I was hospitalized for nearly a month due to procedures and complications from those procedures that resulted in the unexpectedly long stay. Although I have been released from the hospital, I continue to heal and have necessary medical appointments. I want to assure those of you in the 1st District, that as soon as I am healthier, I will return to my full duties as supervisor and vice chair. Thank you for your understanding." So.
Thank you.
It was good to see, did get to see Nick the other day, and hoping he'll be able to come to the, the next meeting. And I also, aside from that, wanted to thank the board for your confidence in me, and for the support of the department heads, and, and all county staff. Over the years, I've been here 15 years, and it is an honor to work here, and we have significant challenges that we face as a team, and I, I just appreciate everyone's dedication and hard work, so thank you.
Let's let Bill introduce himself, and have a few comments, please.
I'm Bill Vanasek. I served as the Assistant County Council in Sutter County from 2007 until 2019. I subsequently went to Glen County, and was their county council for five years, and I'm back now, and I'm very happy. Everybody has made me feel very welcome, and it, it just made me realize that this is absolutely my home, and I'm very happy to be back.
Thank you, Bill. It's nice to have you back, and it's kind of funny, my son is disappointed that he left up in Glen County, because Bill used to work with my son in Glen County, or used to. He says, it took me four years to train him, and now he's gone. So, anyway, but nice to have you back, Bill, and we will look forward to working with you in the, in the future. Thank you. Now we have District reports.
Want to go first?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
All right. So I want to close in memory of William Filters, longtime farmer, Sutter County, out of Lavo, passed away last month. And Hyman Chime of Marysville, 86. Always there in the store when you roll into Union Lumber to buy a firearm, great guy to talk to, very sad. I know we're all going to want to close in memory of Roy Whitaker, I just want to talk about Roy. I, okay, I first met Roy when I was 18, Roy was on the Sutter Yuba, I'm sorry, the Yuba Sutter Mule Deer Foundation. And my nephew said, hey, you ought to go help Roy out, and be on the committee for this foundation, so I said, all right, why not? And that's where I learned so much from Roy, on, from how committees work, how the dinners work, fundraising and so forth. That's where I met Jim Whitaker and so forth. And I met a lot of friends that I have today, just from Roy, from one guy opened up, it's crazy, you meet one individual that opens up the world so much, and that was Roy. So, great guy, bought a lot of firearms from him over the years at Animal Outlet, spent a lot of time in there hanging out, so just awesome guy. And then we have Christ Dokos, he was a longtime coach for 38 years, taught and coached, I mean, from, we're talking from Marysville, Lynnhurst, Yuba City, Yuba College, College of the Siskies. And his daughter was one of my teachers at Sutter High School, so it's very sad. And we're going to end it on a, on a positive note, first of all, Sutter High School softball is, they're, it's, they're winning six to nothing right now, against West Campos, out of SAC, that's great news. If they do win today, they'll be 25-0 on the season, 25-0, it's incredible, great team, amazing. Sutter baseball team beat Houston yesterday, so they got their star pitcher, Jagger Beck, pitching tomorrow, so it'll be a home game, so if they win, they'll be playing in the championship game, and playing the same team they played last year. So that's huge, so they got their ace on the mound tomorrow, they got a couple aces, but he's, Jagger's got a full ride to Hawaii University, so we're excited for him, so that's going to be great. And then I'd like to do a plaque for both those teams, because they won their league championship, and if they win their section, just vote on that now, and if they win their state. But we got to do something for Michelle Blake, who is now Dr. Blake. Yeah, she just graduated with her PhD last week, flew to LA, that's huge, that's a big accomplishment, doing all that in the little time that you don't have. So congratulations to her, it's great to see people in Sutter County doing well, and expanding that education and so forth, but that is it for me, thank you.
Karm? All right, I'd like to close in memory of Karen Lee Lamalfa. If we could please have a letter of sympathy and condolences sent out to Doug and Jill. Also, I'd like to be added to the letters that have been sent to the Filter family and Chime families, please. And Roy Whitaker, I'd like to see something more than just a letter of sympathy and condolences, go out to his family, if, I don't know if the Sheriff's Department is someplace where it's appropriate to, to have some type of recognition for his, you know, two decades of service to the department, but also to this community. And again, I'll leave it to our CAO to figure out where and what does appropriate in form of some type of, something that's there for us to remember his services, and if that's not the right place, maybe at the museum or something, but if we could please consider that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Through the chair, I would, I would support that same, yes, I think that'd be something like in the evening time, or even something towards lunch, you know, invite, you know, colleagues and so forth. We gotta, we should honor our former sheriffs and so forth.
A lot of years of service there.
Yes.
Okay, that's a great idea, Karm. I'd just like to do a couple of things, I have three items. I'd like to request a plaque in recognition of Charlotte Cookie Amaral, for 50 years of service, volunteering for elections at the department. I'd like to do a plaque for her. And then, back to Hyman Chime that Mike brought up, died at age of 86 in Marysville on May 6th, arrangements under a direction of Livin Sullivan, field directors. And Hyman was just a great guy, I guess we could all wish we could pass away in such a manner, he pulls into his driveway and passed away in his car. But, great guy, funny, great stories to tell always, and that business there, I'm not, I might be wrong, but I think it's 150 years, and, and most of it in his family. I think his grandfather was initially involved in it and started, it didn't start it, but with another guy, and then bought him out. So, pretty incredible story there of that family, and Harry's digging over for now, so. And then to Roy Whitaker, you know, Roy, we knew him as a sheriff, but we also knew his son, Jim, was, was a board member here for many, many years, I think almost 20 years on this board. Roy is a dedicated public servant and beloved former sheriff of Sutter County, passed away April 25th, 2024, surrounded by his family, is 84 years old. He graduated high school, and Roy answered the call to serve his country in the United States Army, stationed in Panama. He not only served as a nation of honor, but also founded a love of his life, and formed a marriage and a union, and was blessed with two wonderful children, Janet, Tracy, and The following military service, Roy and Vlad settled in Yuba City, California, and Roy embarked on a remarkable journey in law enforcement, unwavering commitment to justice, and his dedication to service in the community led him to become the sheriff of Sutter County in 1971. During the two decades of tenure, Roy Whitaker earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues and constituents alike. He's known as steadfast leadership of commission for others, and unwavering commitment of holding the law. Beyond his professional accomplishment, Roy is a dedicated father and husband, and grandfather. He shared spending time with his family and friends, and created memories that will live on in the hearts of all the new him. Funeral services under a life of Roy Whitaker, St. Edward Church, on May 17th, 2024, 11:00 AM, reception meeting following St. Edward Church. Thank you.
Move to approve the request.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and meeting.
Hold on.
Meeting adjourned.
No, hold on.
We do have two closed sessions.
Oh, we have closed session, okay. I spoke too soon, I wasn't paying attention to that.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Closed sessions, Conference of Labor Negotiator, John Perry, California United Domestic Workers of America, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Conference of Labor Negotiators, Gina Rowland and Veronica Baumgartner, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Peace Officer Association, and Unrepresented Law Management Employees, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6.